Okay, here we go folks. Mr. Nakarado, I do not have a gavel. There you go. Trust me pal. I know we agree on one thing for sure. Alright, so everybody understands, we're in a public work session, okay? It's gonna be real informal. We're gonna discuss budget and budget alone. We'll take some time, I don't know how much time, but the point is everybody here is welcome. And, you know, get in line if everyone's raising their hand at the same time. You know me, I'll get to everybody and everybody have a chance. So, that said, I'm gonna hand it over to our city manager and I should say to start, to welcome everybody. Thanks for being here. It shows interest in the community which we love. We want your input. Clearly, we're missing two council members tonight. But again, no decisions are gonna be made. We're just in the first phase of this budget process. So, that said, Mr. Butterby, it's all yours.
Thanks Mayor, Council. Good evening and welcome everyone. It's an exciting evening for the staff to present to the council and to the community the draft 2018 budget. We did have a chance, some of us, to go watch a bit of the homecoming parade, that small-town America at its best. We've got some wonderful things going on in this community and one of them is gonna be the 2018 budget. Council, I'd like to refresh your memory from the goals and objectives session that we had back in April. At the end of that, we consolidated and summarized the largest desires that the council had. And there were seven of those. And I want to tell you that of those seven tonight, we're going to address in some way each and every one of those. And we think that that shows great progress towards what the council wants to do. You have the ear of the community and so we're gonna accomplish some good things. I want to review those very quickly and then I'm gonna turn it over to Finance Director Mike Farina to walk us through the budget, the, some slides that he's prepared to show you some of the general things that we've accomplished in the past and what we're going to accomplish this year with your permission. One of the objectives that the council had was to balance all demands, attempting to strengthen our general fund reserve, striving to get back to 10%. I went to tell you that we have made progress on that between 2017 and 2018. One of the concerns for council was ensuring that our employees receive fair raises. We've addressed that as well in this budget draft to you. There was a desire to update the finance accounting system to the Cassell software. After consultation with the Finance Director, we believe we can defer that to 2019. You hoped to allow us to relieve, release the hiring freeze. We did that to some degree by bringing on the other parking buildings and grounds employee for half a year. We also unleashed the hiring freeze on one police officer. We still have a little bit of work to do on that. So, we made some goals accomplishments towards that goal as well. One of my goals was to get back on track with the vehicle replacement plan. That too is included in the budget, not fully what 2017 and 2018 called for, but steps in that direction. There was a desire to ensure that we have the security fence around the police department. That is in the budget. And also, there was a desire that we create our own in-house IT capability. We are going to take one major step towards that autonomy by creating an IT position. The primary function will be as a help desk person, if you will, with hopes in the future to turn over the server maintenance and those types of things to that position as well. So, we're in good shape moving into 2018, finishing up 2017. We've accomplished, within the draft budget, many of the things that you wanted to accomplish. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike to dive into a few of the details for just a few moments.
Good evening Mayor and Council, citizens. So, what I've prepared is more of a highlight, summary of the budget document that you've had for now almost a couple of weeks. What I wanna show is a positive budget outlook, what this budget presents, this draft budget. Going from the 2016 results, which we didn't know at the time we were preparing 2017 budget, how we, so how we ended up in 2016, our 2017 projections versus what we had originally budgeted in 2017, back last November, December timeframe. And then, also to show that we've got a great start going into 2018 with the budget. As the city manager pointed out, this budget is meeting several or many of the goals and objectives. I'll also point those out. And then, I wanna also talk about the creation of a new Culture and Recreation Fund and the, also the creation of a new Stormwater Management Fund, and the, which is also coming from the elimination of the Drainage Debt Service Fund. So, that's pretty much what this overview of the budget documents you have is going to, this PowerPoint is gonna go through. So, to start off with, and our largest fund, our operating fund, is the general fund. So, that's where I'll spend most of tonight's focus on this presentation. So, our 2016 actuals, the audited numbers, finished better than what was projected when we were preparing the 2017 budget. Those numbers go into our 2017 budget as the starting point for that budget. Then, we took a look at how our revenues were doing in 2017 and they're currently exceeding the budgeted amount. And that, overall, and that is despite the loss of the E911 funding that you've been hearing about, the 170,000 that we did have in the budget when we prepared the 2017 budget. We are not getting that, but despite that, we are still showing projected revenues better than what we had budgeted at the time we did the budget. Part of that is a sales tax revenue is projected 2.7% ahead of the budgeted amount. And that's based on about eight months of revenues so far. And then, also, we had projected an amount for the Aquatic Center donations to help pay for the Aquatic Center and the slide in part. And those donations exceeded the amount we budgeted in 2017. Also, 2018 careful planning to ensure improving financial situation. In other words, our unrestricted unassigned fund balance. We really worked hard to make sure it improved over the amount that we had budgeted for 2017. You maybe remember that we had started out with, or we had put together the 2017 budget with that number being 250,000. I'll show you on another slide how we're projecting it's going to end up. And also expenditures to maintain current service levels. And in addition to that, adding the Aquatic Center operations and also accomplishing goals and objectives, one of them which is the strengthened fund balance reserve. So, this is where we started. This is the budget that we put together at the beginning, or last year, at the end of last year, to adopt our 2017 budget. May recall that we had a projected fund balance of 7,533. That's what we projected 2016 to end up at. And then, we projected a budgeted fund balance for 2017 of 702,000, 218,000. The number that is circled in green is that number that we all may remember that we really worked hard to get that up to the 250,000. When the budget was finally done, that's where it was. The unrestricted unassigned was 250,000. Now, looking at projections, where we're projecting revenues will end up for the end of 2017 and also expenditures. To start off with, you can see that, oops, sorry. We, our audited ending fund balance for 2016 is 8,966,000 compared to what we had projected at the, when we were doing the 2017 budget, 7.5 million. Now, not all of that was due to revenues exceeding projections or expenditures coming in under budget. Part of it was a reclassification of the loan for the DDA fund that helped increase that. But it still is better, aside from that, than what we had originally projected in 2016 for ending fund balance for 2016. Our projected revenue for 2017 is 11.7 million. That's better than what we had budgeted. And also, the expenditures coming in at 18.6 or 18.7 million. Leaving us with a projected ending fund balance of almost $2 million. Now, of that, you know, there are the non-spendable amounts, the restricted amounts. But our unrestricted unassigned projected fund balance is 443,000. That compares to the 250,000 that we had budgeted. Great news. And that leads us, you know, we're projecting that we're gonna end up 2017 better than what we had budgeted. That brings us then into the 2018 proposed budget. Revenues of 10.5 million and then expenditures totaling 10.6 million. So, our expenditures are exceeding revenues. However, I believe that through careful management and also the conservative nature of this budget, it shows that we have revenues over expenditure of 143,000. But that can be managed in 2018 as well as 19 and 20 to where we start to close that gap and revenues actually begin exceeding expenditures. So, like I said, the budget for the general fund is 10,644,600 in this draft recommended budget. So, what that is, and I'm just gonna highlight parts of that 10 million dollars. Information technology position requested. That's where requesting 66,900. 49,500 of that, which is the salary and then plus the taxes and benefits. Also included is the police station's security fence of 56,300. Vehicle equipment replacements, 138,000. Electrical and lighting replacement at the History Museum, 27,800. But, part of that, we will be seeking 10,000 in a grant to help pay for that. But this budget also includes frozen positions, one police officer position, a street maintenance worker position, and then the part-time cemetery finance technician coordinator and the part-time economic development specialist. Those are positions that were either vacant at the time we did the 2017 budget or were left vacant in 2017. Also, this proposed budget shows a movement of the Culture, Cultural Center and Parks and Recreation. They were formerly in, or they are in the general fund. We are proposing to move them into a new special revenue fund that accounts for all of Culture and Recreation in one fund. And it just allows for more, a better ability to see revenues versus expenditures and then actually see how much the general fund is supporting those functions, Culture and Recreation. It's not uncommon for that to be handled that way in a government. That's what, how I've, that's how it was done in where I used to be at Parker. It was its own special revenue funds. As a matter of fact, there was three different funds. There was a Parks and Recreation Fund, a Recreation Fund, and a Cultural Fund. Here, we're just proposing one fund, a special revenue fund, Culture and Recreation, to account for and better be able to see and manage those revenues and expenditures. Of course, to create a fund, it needs council approval. So, we would have to get council approval. That part of it is the budget. But I believe we would need an ordinance to do it as well. And, at the end of 2018, that would leave us with an unrestricted unassigned fund balance of 357,000. And the delta there is, is we end 2017 with the 400 and some thousand, down to 357, and that's about the 143,000 being used revenues under expenditures. So, here's, here's the graphical look or the table look at the proposed budget. Again, there's the budgeted net revenue, over or under expenditures of 143,700. I showed you that slide earlier. And that would leave us with a budgeted ending fund balance of 1,815,000 at the end of 2018. And you can see how the unrestricted unassigned ends up at 357,000. Better than the 250 that we left 2017 now.
Excuse me, Mike. We didn't get the 9/11 funds last year. 9/11 funds included in this budget?
No, conservatively, we are not gonna count them. We don't, do not have an answer from the 911 board yet. Miles is working on that with other board members. And hopefully, we will get it, but it's not in this budget. If we get it, that just adds to that number.
Any update on that, Miles? Anything you should know?
We're having our work session October 25th.
So, on to the proposed new Culture and Recreation Fund. First of all, within that fund, the Woodland Park Aquatic Center is open, full year operations in 2018. With this creation of the Culture and Recreation Fund, it's gonna, going to account for Parks and Recreation, the Cultural Center and Aquatic Center operations, the revenues associated and the expenditures for those operations. What it provides is an extra level of accountability and transparency. It shows expenditures versus revenues, plus the general fund investment needed to balance out those amenities. It would also shows a commitment of the fees that are collected, the Aquatic Center fees, the Culture and Rec, Cultural Center fees, and also the Parks and Recreation fees. And those fees are then committed in, in that special revenue fund as opposed to being in the general fund with all of the other revenues in the general fund. And it commits them and the other related revenues to the Culture and Recreation purposes. Again, formerly in the general fund, and historically, the general fund has subsidized Culture and Recreation. Now, the Aquatic Center is a part of that. I also mentioned that this budget proposes a new Stormwater Management Fund. And by new, it's not really that new. It used to be called, or what we did have it classified as is a Drainage Debt Service Fund. We paid off that debt in 2017, this year. So, therefore, those revenues that are by ordinance and municipal code, those revenues that we collect for stormwater are specifically stated that they must be used for stormwater purposes. So, we still need to maintain a special fund or a different fund to separate out those revenues. However, we no longer need a debt service fund because the debt's paid off. So, in talking and consulting with the auditors, they recommended we do a capital projects fund because some of those revenues are restricted to capital project purposes. However, not all of the revenues are. Some of the revenues may be used for operations and maintenance. So, specifically what the municipal code says is accounts for expenditures of stormwater, capital fees and monthly user charges. Those are the charges on the water bill that residents get. They must be used for stormwater management activities, including design and construction of facilities, master planning, debt service and repair and maintenance of facilities. Basically, everything related to stormwater management. In this fund for 2018, we've proposed 343,300 in expenditures for dual road design and stormwater master plan improvements.
Excuse me, I'm not familiar with where that is.
Yes, absolutely. Dual Road is right behind the How To Score to the South. So, if you think of, up on that ridge, up above the trailer park, that's Dual. It's, as we, when we get into more discussion. That ties into some of the Park Street improvements as well because those two roads intersect at the top of the hill. So, it made sense to bring those two projects together.
So, a few more highlights in this budget. Also, what was done this year and moving, well, what we did was we moved the North Teller Build a Generation expenditures out of the Grants Fund and into the general fund. And the reason for that is because that program has not been grant funded for at least the past two years that I've been here. So, it's really not a grant. It's money that gets, has been transferred out of the general fund into the Grants Fund, yet there's no grant revenue supporting it. So, it just made sense to eliminate that transfer and just account for those expenditures directly in the general fund. It's similar to a recommendation by the auditors to also eliminate the debt service funds for the Memorial Park and the Aquatic Center because there's no specific revenue coming into those funds to pay for the debt service. The general fund is funding the debt service for those funds. Therefore, they recommended that we just pay it right out of the general fund.
Do you no longer receive any grants for North Teller Road Generation?
We do not. She, she, well, we haven't this past year. She constantly applies for them, but a lot of that Department of Justice money is dried up.
Can somebody explain to me Build a Generation?
I can do that. It's, and Sally, you can help me. And if you do help me, I'll need you to come to the microphone since we are recording and broadcasting, please. The Build a Generation program began in the late 90s, I think it was 1999, under a Department of Justice program called Communities That Care. A board was created, a collaborative board of entities throughout the county, things such as community partnership, the school districts, things that were involving kids, particularly high school students. And so, surveys were done to identify those at-risk issues that were predominant in our community. And my recollection is that they were drugs, alcohol, and those kinds of things for our teenagers. And so, the program was intended to work collaboratively with multiple entities to come up with programs that would cause changes of behavior, basically to keep the kids out of our court system so that they didn't become a burden on law enforcement. So, it's been ongoing now for 18 years. There have been, I think, five or six Build a Generation coordinators over the years. So, they do that kind of work. They also supervise the teen center as well.
Thank you. Anything else, Paul?
I was just wondering about the grants, probably drug money, taxes and stuff like that from that.
Correct. And actually, we've received some grants over the years from SEDOT as well for seatbelt education for high school students. There's been numerous sources of grants, all related though to helping our children and our teens be good citizens.
May I ask who applies for those grants typically?
Typically, it's the Build a Generation coordinated Karen Casey.
Alright. Then, moving on to the Streets Capital Improvements Fund, you would see a little over 2.1 million dollars in expenditures and transfers. Of that, 1.6 million is related to street improvements, the park and dual rebuild, short and Baldwin improvements, and also parking and alley improvements. Another part of that is 150,000 that is going to be transferred into the Drainage Fund, or the Stormwater Management Fund, I should say, to accomplish the project that I mentioned previously. And that concludes the presentation. I just wanted also to put up the budget calendar. Tonight is our October 11th work session where it will be opened up to city council for discussion, questions, and on the budget. Also, thinking, and we also have an October 24th work session scheduled. But if there's, if we feel like we may need a third one, we are proposing either the 16th or 17th, which would be next week, a work session on those days. Just reminds you, November 2nd is the first reading scheduled for the budget. And then, on November 16th is public hearing and adoption. However, those dates can be moved out. We've left a couple of council meetings room to still, if we need even more work sessions or the dates that we have don't work. We can, we can move these council meetings out. We've got room for it. So, with that?
With that, council, you can see our format tonight is a bit different than in years past. That was at your request. So, we're, we're prepared to answer any questions that you have. We're not prepared, well, we're not suggesting that we go page by page or line by line. You've had the budget in front of you for a couple of weeks in order to study it. So, we're prepared to answer any questions that you have. The department heads are here. I see Tanner Coy is here from the DDA as the treasurer. And I'm sure he's prepared to answer questions that you may have. We don't have any presentations from department heads. We're done with presenting. We're now moving forward with answering your questions because we thought that's what you desired from this work session. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, great. And thanks to council for urging this on and thanks to you for following through. You know, we're already a month ahead of where we were last year in the process. So, I just think for all of us, it's gonna be much more comfortable, no time constraints, plenty of time to answer and ask questions. So, should we contain this to general fund tonight? Or how do you want it to be?
Truly, it's up to you. We felt you wanted it open-ended. We can talk every single fund. If we're done talking all the funds at 8 o'clock, then we'll bring the ordinance for final adoption to you the next council meeting. That was a joke. But we will take it in any order that you want, in any sequence. The only thing we ask is that if you, when you have a question about a particular page, tell us what page number that is so we can all get there. But Mayor, I'll let you control the flow. We're prepared to be flexible.
That sounds good. Go ahead, Ken.
I just wanna make one comment. And I told Mike earlier, the notes section on each page really, really helped a lot and eliminated, I think, a lot of questions, I think it will tonight because I, and I was reading through it and thought, what is that? And you go down to the section for that, quite often explained totally or mostly. So, I really appreciate you doing that. I think it really clarified a lot of things for me.
And that's another thing I think the council asked for, last process. And we're just getting better at it, I hope, as we will. Well, let's start then with general fund and kinda go that direction and we'll go from there, see what kind of time we have. Val, you wanna start for us since you're right here next to me?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was kinda prepared to do this page by page, so forgive me if I start with page three. And, sorry about this. So, I, I just highlighted some things. It's, to me, this is just an educational and sort of an informative session for me. And I got a little late to this because of obvious reasons with the vehicles situation. But as you both well know, I've been asking questions. And, and so, I'm just gonna ask some general questions here. I highlighted these and so I'm kinda looking for a little bit more detail that shows up. The transfer's out. Could you give us, I mean, you've kinda given a broad brush on those and some specifics. Can you, you know, 10 seconds or less? I'm looking at page three, 488,000 out of the general fund are going to various things.
Right. And let me... On page 26, and you don't have to turn there, I'll just, I'll just let you know. The transfer's out is 488,300. 6,300 of that is the transfer to the Victim Assistance Law Enforcement's grant. Most of that, the Victim Assistance Program, is covered by a grant. However, not all of it is covered by, by the grants that we receive. So, 6,300 is transferred out of the general fund into the Grants Fund to cover the difference in the, in the Victim Assistance Law Enforcement Fund. Then, the remaining portion of that, 482,000, is transferred to the New Culture and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. Previously, there, before we had the Aquatic Center and even when we were budgeting 2017, it was all in the general fund. So, you wouldn't actually even know unless you did the math what that number was. Now, you see it. Culture and Recreation is, the general fund invests 482,000 into the Culture and Recreation Fund. Some of that is for Parks and Recreation, some of it is for the Cultural Center, and now, some of it is for the Aquatic Center.
Eventually, we're gonna see that because there's gonna be three different.
There's three different, it's the one fund, but there are three different sub-accounts, sub-funds.
And those are included in this budget packet, Mayor. And the Councilman Carr, pages three and four are summaries. And each of those lines within the summary, the vast majority of them, have a detailed page a little bit further in.
Thank you. I went through this page by page, starting the front. And like the city manager says, a lot of these things are answered later. I see those later. Unfortunately, I didn't go back and edit my questions. I do wanna make a statement though, that the new accounting is thrilling for me with my background and the cost centers, the departments, the reorientation of that is just so spectacularly wonderful for me. And on the rest of council too, we get to see the granularity. We get to see things isolated where they should be. That's my, that's my words, of course. But it is, it is, I'm very pleased with the new direction with the new departments, with the new accounting allocations. As I've told you privately, the notes are wonderful. I asked even more questions than the notes, as you well know, but that's okay. At least those cover a major portion. At least those cover a major portion. So, a lot of what went on last year, with me at least, I've already had most of it answered by staff, and I do that for education basis, not for anything else. I'm kind of a detailed person, an engineer, I guess, is that way, and engineering accountant, I guess, is the worst possible thing. But I just wanted to state that I'm really thrilled with the city, with this new arrangement. We can really see, start to make an evaluation as council of where things really are instead of a big lump sum.
The one that we pulled out was the Culture and Rec program, and primarily because of the Aquatic Center. We felt the community needed to see that level of detail. We wanted that level of detail, and based on Mike's experience, then it was, it made sense to create this new Culture and Recreation Fund and put everything that Syndicateing is responsible for on just its own few pages. So, I'm glad you appreciate that effort, Mike.
I do. Also, on page four, I have capital outlay highlighted. I'm sure it's answered later, and I'm sure I know the answer to that later. Let's not dwell on it until we get there.
Okay.
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if you just want me to kind of whip through some of my...
Whip through it till we get done with the general fund.
Till you get sick of hearing from me, right? Okay.
Won't be long.
Once again, we've talked about the Aquatic Center things. We've talked about the finance system on page 16. We've talked about, we're not going to do the finance upgrade system that I talked about. I've been convinced by the city that we can get, we can go along. I see good progress in reporting, so I'm certain that's accurate, so why do I care? So, thank you for making that evaluation.
I'll tell you what, let me just sit around for a second.
Yeah.
We kind of got up to page 16 of the general fund. If anyone has questions, why don't we go in the kind of chronological order? So, between the beginning and page 16, if you have questions or concerns, there were one thing that stood out to me on page 14, I think it stood out to everybody, the savings and insurance of over $100,000. Can you tell us about that a little bit, Mike?
That's, you know, I don't have exact numbers, but it is a little bit misleading. It's not really a savings. It is allocating directly to the cultural, the new fund, the insurances related. What used to be lumped in there was workers' compensation, general and property and casualty insurance. To account for the insurances in their proper funds, rather than do it via a transfer out of the general fund into the Culture and Recreation Fund, and also the utility funds, those numbers are now directly budgeted in those funds. And as a matter of fact, this is probably more than you care about, but the auditors actually take it out of the transfer and put it into a direct allocation for the utility funds, because they're an enterprise fund.
I'm going to turn to Suzanne. I do think, though, that our total insurance, excluding the Aquatic Center, we did have a better, we had better rates in 2018 than 2017.
That's correct. Our rates were lower, our workers' comp, things, and the property casualty pay, so we're down for a year.
So, Mayor, when I told you that we'd saved the $90,000, I was misleading, I was mistaken, but we did have savings over the previous year, because we had good behavior and fewer accidents.
Good for us. Go ahead, Ken.
Well, just a quick question, probably, turn back on page five. Miscellaneous street revenue item with year-end projection for 2017, $29,400, and that's so much different than 2016 and 2018 proposed. What is that?
That number in 2017 projected, that is an actual number that we have received already. I can't recall exactly what it is we've received, however, it is an actual number. But conservatively budgeting for it, we want to still keep it at, in 2018, at the $5,000, because we may not receive that money. It's probably a one-time project or single projects that occurred in 2017 that we can't necessarily count on in 2018. Now, if some...
I can do a bit, I can flesh it out for you.
Okay.
When we have a person who hits one of our streetlights, and they reimburse us for hitting the streetlight, that's where it goes, is miscellaneous street revenue. So, we had about $24,000, because the streetlights, I think, if you include everything, is $4,000 or $5,000. So, if someone can take responsibility for knocking down one of the streetlights and their insurance covers it, this is where that revenue stream goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course.
On page five, the sales tax of 1.09, I traced that down. It's the school.
Correct.
How did that work out for the schools? Is it more than they anticipated? Is it on target? Is it, is it working for them?
You know what, Paul? They actually presented at the last council meeting.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I'll get you a copy of that. But they showed exactly where the money went, and they were pleased with the revenue. I don't know if it was a lot more than they thought, but about $1.2 million went back to salaries. And I'll get you a copy of that, that report. It was pretty...
I'm sure we have that. It was slightly higher, Councilman Sonier, just as our projections now are slightly higher than what we budgeted, because sales tax has been doing a little bit better. It wasn't, it was just a couple of percentage points. I've had some conversations with Brian Gustafson, you'll recall, he did the presentation. Council knows that we produce these sales tax results, and we're going to include Mr. Gustafson in these, so that he and the administration can then do a better job of predicting what their revenue stream is. But it was slightly higher, and I suspect we can get you copies, and also, you could watch it on YouTube.
Mike, on, I'm sorry, on that increase in the sales tax based on the school tax, basically, how did that impact our Tabor mandated reserve? Can you explain that?
Tabor mandates a 3% emergency reserve on fiscal year spending, and much to my dismay, their, the payments that we make to the school district, and I've gone round and round trying to figure out a way to not have to include it in our Tabor calculation, however, we're advised that we need to, because it is part of our fiscal year spending, even though it's money in and money out. So, it does impact it to the tune of 3% or $60,000, when it's $2 million. So, and I say to my dismay, because it's a double reservation. The school district also reserves the same 3% on that amount. But that's how the Tabor law is being interpreted, and that's how we have to do it. So, it does affect our, our emergency reserve is higher by that amount, and therefore, our unrestricted unassigned is lower by that amount.
Is that emergency reserve then available to the city, or do we have to reserve it on behalf of the school district?
That's a good question. I believe it's, the school district reserves it on their end, and we reserve it on ours, so it's part of our reserve.
Do we subtract it from the amount that's collected on that 1.09, or is it...
No, we do not.
We're still exploring the impacts of that. It just came to our attention during the audit, or maybe it was even post-audit, that that discovery was made. I've had conversations with the superintendent to see if there's a way that we can balance that, whether it was, it's a, I'm not sure, an escrow account, something. We just don't feel like we should feel the pain for the gain that they have. It's not a dead issue, but this is, again, the conservative approach to present the budget to you, because right now, it's what the law requires. We're going to continue to work on some form of mitigating factor, because it's causing us to not, it's causing us to have a higher restricted fund balance.
Who do we work with on that, at the state level?
We'll get our city attorney involved, and we'll see what we can do to explore that.
Yeah, I've been talking to the city attorney a lot about it, and I always think of something and call her, and then, well, no, this is how we have to account for it. Of course, you know, we do want to follow what the interpretation of Tabor is, and then, so really, it's a constitutional amendment. Tabor is a constitutional amendment, so there's, really, it's just based on interpretation. Right now, the interpretation is that we have to use, include it in our 3% calculation.
There are other taxing districts that have gone this route for school district supplement. What have they done?
I actually talked to one, I think it's Aspen, and they said they include it in their Tabor calculation of the, for the emergency reserve.
Yeah, but they keep 100% emergency reserve.
The good news is, this is, if you will, a one-time sunk cost. It's not cumulative. Every year, it's not going to be an additional $60,000.
Oh, okay.
It's based on the total amount, and it grows incrementally as our total fund balance grows.
As our total expenditures grow.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick, simple question, probably, on page seven. I'm just curious, traffic fines, under fines and forfeitures, at one time in 2016, it's like $30,000 an hour. In those 2017 and 2018 projections, like half of that. Something happened there that's different, obviously.
Miles, if you could come to the podium and speak to that, please?
I don't, it's a good thing. I'm just curious, why the big difference?
You working out?
Yes.
Okay. The short answer is, our call load's gone up, the officer level has stayed the same. We are no longer proactively out writing tickets, is the answer, quite frankly. We are about 8.8% busier than we were last year. We're up 151 cases. Literally during the day shift and swing shift, officers are at their desks working on paperwork. They get dispatched to a call, they come directly back to the office to continue working on paperwork until they get sent on the next call. So, that's really affected their ability to go out there and handle calls for service as well as do proactive traffic enforcement.
So, this is really not a good thing?
Correct. It's impacted our courts. Our courts have seen that drastic decline. I used traffic tickets and citations to modify people's behavior, not as a revenue-generating stream. But it also impacts our workload, and so, you can tell that they are not out there writing tickets. We've actually fielded two complaints last week, because we are not out there doing traffic enforcement, although we would like to. We are taking care of higher priority calls.
Recall that we have four officers right now who are going through field training. Once those get through field training, I think that number's right.
I am down four positions currently. I have one position frozen, one position vacant, and two positions that are currently in training. So, I have four positions that are not out there handling calls.
And that will improve a bit with the hiring of the new officer, and then two that are in training, when we fill that one vacancy.
Okay.
But it is down. It is true, the number of tickets. I think the number, the amount of patrolling, please don't interpret that as we're not out patrolling, it's just been reduced some, but we still have officers on the street.
Thank you.
Okay, Val, we're back to page 16 or so. Wherever you want to take off.
I skipped over some notes on page 15. Vehicle presentation was last week. I would prefer we have another session later, when Mr. Schaefer could join us and Mr. Sawyer could join us, so that second session, whenever it is. Unfortunately, John Schaefer will not be back for, I would say, another six, seven days. So, 16th and 17th may not be enough time for him to get back 100%. Just a note to the council, when they're considering that I'm going to blow by anything related to vehicles tonight, because it's not appropriate for, in my estimation. So, page 18, our new IT department. Some of us in the IT cap world said, oh, we just need a dweeb to do that. That's our term. Sorry. So, we see a mid-level, I guess is what we would characterize the salary and wages. I'm looking down at contract services. Most of this is related to peak internet, I suppose. The interesting part to me is, if somebody can give a little bit more detail on the IT department, I'd appreciate it.
So, it's not truly a department. It is a cost center, if you will. The proposed IT position would report to finance. So, you can see the salary and benefits that we mentioned is $66,900 for that position. We anticipated it being more of a help desk type position, and really handling a lot of the calls from the various customers, our internal customers, fixing their problems with their desktop or printers or whatever. And so, then going down to the next line, that $8,000 is just an estimate of parts that may need to be replaced over the course of the year. The $30,000 is the peak internet contract amount for their service that they provide. That is not only the help desk, and it's based, it's based on 35 hours per month. The contract is 35 hours per month for $30,000, is what the contract, and that contract's been in place now for several years and is actually continuing for a few more years. That's their base contract amount. We also get charged additional if they exceed that amount. However, with the new IT person, we are hoping that we can keep them at their base contract level, and our in-house position will be able to handle a majority of the customer service requests. The maintenance contracts are just the various softwares that we use. For example, finance software, which is ADG, Young Electric Sign, Constant Contact, Full Court, which is used by the courts, ESRI, and then Colorado Customer Computer Support. Those are all just software maintenance agreements for those various softwares. Then, oh, I see, I'm misspelling a typo of maintenance.
We don't pay you to spell?
Then, the internet access and network connections, that is also all peak internet, $135,600. And what that is, is it's the peak internet contract for email services, Wi-Fi, virtual servers hosting, and those virtual servers are the servers that host virtually our Casell, ADG, and a lot of our other softwares that the city uses, police department software. They're all, they're, them hosting the servers. It's also the Ethernet, Microsoft licensing, live streaming, and dedicated internet access. That's what peak bills us for those services.
So, there's five components that historically we've contracted out for what we call information systems. One is our internet service provider, the voice-over internet protocol, the server maintenance, the server operations, and then the help desk component. So, we're going to eat this elephant one bite at a time, and the one thing that we think we can hire someone to do relatively easily is provide that help desk support to us. We're going to have to rely on someone for internet service providing, same person would provide the voice-over internet protocol. We think at some point in time, the server maintenance and server operations, we could bring in-house as well, but we need to start this process slowly, and frankly, with peak internet's help to help us make that transition.
Well, that's my question. How would this individual interface with our internet provider?
Well, we have a ticket system now. If there are issues, then we submit tickets and get those things resolved. So, there would be absolute, a lot of connection between whoever was our internet service provider, whoever would provide us the voice-over internet protocol with this person.
Who provides the voice service now?
Peak internet as well.
Oh, so it's all peak?
Yeah, it's still over the internet, and they're our service provider for that.
So, this individual would work with the peak internet?
Very closely.
Would they physically be located here?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, they would be a city employee, absolutely.
It's pretty cheap.
Do they, if we move forward with this person, does it take any cost away from the computer services and maintenance contracts from peak?
The, what it's going to take away are the amounts that we get billed over the $30,000.
So, you still maintain these contracts?
Yes, those are all... Yes, those are all contracts for the other services, the VoIP, the email, the virtual servers. That's all still going to exist. And actually, that number that I just mentioned, 135,000, does not include the voiceover internet protocol. That's actually in the general support cost center under telephone charges. And that's, that number includes CenturyLink, but the majority of that 35,000 in that line item is the voiceover internet protocol that we get charged by peak.
Is there a separate charge under the police operations?
That, I was meaning to mention that as well. The police department gets billed separately and it is charged directly to their department. So you will see some more internet and access connections in the police department's cost center.
Would this new position, that individual then also respond to? As a help desk for the police department?
Yes.
All departments. Doesn't matter, water, police, both.
Except for utilities. I'm just kidding.
I have one other quick question, clarification maybe back on page 13. I just don't know what this is. It says contract services and the note says mobile home insignias. I don't understand what that is. Just clarify that.
Yes, the which?
It's right here. 35 or 6 on page 13.
Oh, got it.
Billing our mobile home insignias. I'm just curious what that is.
Yeah.
Whenever Pike's Peak Regional, we add either a new mobile home or a manufactured home. They have to be in insignia installed. We have to purchase those insignias from the state. They're $60 apiece. The builder does pay, reimburse those to us. So that's a certain number of insignias per year. So far, we've sold two of them.
So what do you do? Put them on the site where they're going to put them?
They are on the mobile home specifically in a spot that shows that it has been installed and inspected and is legal and meets all the building codes associated with those mobile homes.
At least for this year.
Yeah. And throughout, I mean, it's an insignia that says it's got a stamp of approval.
Thank you. I'd never heard of that.
I'm still back on page 18. Somebody else has something before. So 3535, that's the general ledger, in case people out there wonder what I'm talking about. ID. It's 30 grand. Your description of what you said was in there, sounds like the stuff that this person up here is going to be doing. Why do we still have 30,000 there? I understand the other contracts and services below that, the need for all those remaining and partitioning out to different departments. Why do we still have 30,000 left?
Make it somewhat analogous to, we have a licensed professional engineer on staff as the city engineer, but we also have contract services for engineering consulting. So that if, for example, is a hydraulics engineer, he has a question on traffic engineering, we farm that out. And so that's the practical reason. We're also under contract with peak internet for that amount for a few more years. So we will use them in that contractual role to help us facilitate the creation of and the execution of this person.
Not the execution of the person, the job. And our hope is, is that the new position will be able to handle a lot of the help desk type related items. However, at that level, we probably will not get somebody with great systems admin experience nor network size admin experience. So we will still rely on, and this IT person will work with, peak internet for those types of services.
So we're using up two years of contract the best we can, just to bottom line it.
Correct.
There's, up this table is your network systems people, so they should need extra help for free. That's all I had on IT system. This won't need an ordinance or residence because it's a general city administration function under finance. Once again, I mean, everybody just pitch in here. On page 20, I'm looking at exactly what you said. There's internet access, network connections right there at the police department. One thing I was going to ask is, there, it sounded like you had all the storage allocation in this other section. You didn't try to break out who's using how many megabytes or gigabytes for storage, I assume, as an accounting?
From the service?
Yeah, that kind of thing. In other words, all those kind of things are lumped in over here.
Well, it's the same services that are in the general, or in the IT cost center. However, peak internet is able to bill us separately for the amounts that are actually related to the police department, so they get coded directly to the police department. So for the internet access and network connections, it's peak internet's contract for virtual server hosting Ethernet and Wi-Fi. The $19,000 is.
Can we go back to page 19?
Yes.
Oh, the expenses for Main Street. Can you explain to me the, let's see, recruitment and retention, 21,500? What is that for?
Jane?
We have in there $4,000 for some wayfinding directional banners, an attempt to reduce some of the sign clutter downtown, take down some of the directional signs, replace some of our decorative banners with wayfinding banners. So there's money in there for that. The downtown safety and technical assistance from Pike's Peak, actually, there's two different things there. Downtown safety and technical assistance grant. This is $7,500 that we have budgeted as a match for a grant through community builders to build on the walking and parking audit that we've just completed and to get some technical assistance on how we can really address some of the issues that are inherent in Highway 24 being our main street. And then Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments has a grant, a $10,000 grant, well, $10,000 worth of work, the 50-50 match, and so we've put in there $5,000 for a grant match. Haven't identified exactly what that grant would be for. There's just that opportunity. They've said, we think we'll have money available next year. Generally, it's been economic development type activities, so we want to be able to take advantage of that, put that grant match in there.
Is it development or is it more surveys?
What they, what the money was available for this year was website development, marketing assistance, some of those kinds of things. They haven't identified what that will be for next year, but generally, that's what it's been. It's energy mineral impact dollars that are intended to help communities that are impacted by, in our case, mineral development, deal with the impacts of that development, so...
If your concern is, is it money for studies and surveys? I think if I heard your question correctly.
That's correct.
As opposed to action?
Actual.
An activity? The things Jane listed were action. They weren't studies or surveys.
Exactly. Well, then...
I just don't see the actions.
The question I still have then is, why would the city cover these expenses for Main Street?
That line is not in Main Street. That's part of the special projects office.
No, I'm talking about, okay, now I'm following. Main Street expenses, city, Main Street expenses, Main Street, I guess.
Correct.
What are those for?
The $22,000 from Main Street is the budget that they requested of the city for their support. I'm not prepared to answer what the intent for that is.
Can we get that from Main Street?
Yes, yes, we can get you the breakdown of that.
I don't need another work session for it. I'd just like to get it by email.
I can email.
Do you recall what those things were, Jane?
You know, it's, there's admin support, there's some project dollars in there. Val might remember as well. He was there for the budget.
Yeah, there's lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff, advertising, yeah, lots of stuff.
Okay. We'll make sure, we'll send that out.
I do care. I'd like to know what it is. And then the position, the part-time position, we're going to continue to fund that? Or you're proposing that we continue to fund that?
The part-time Main Street coordinator position is what that position is.
Currently, that position is still filled. We don't know what the outcome of a process will be. So at this point, I'm assuming that it will be status quo, and so it's in the budget. It's the most conservative approach.
Go ahead, Ken.
Just another quick question, I think, on page 20. Operating expenses under the police operations. Just curious why the big jump on equipment repairs and maintenance, probably some big item in particular, just went from, you know, 30s into 60s. An explanation would be helpful.
Absolutely. Okay, we're back on. If you flip to the next page, page 21, you'll see some item number three plus you.
I missed that.
Not a problem. Currently, our phones are end of life, out of contract, more cannibalizing a lot of them.
Yep, I got you.
So I can continue or that's good enough, will you?
That's good enough for me.
Okay.
These notes are very good. I just, I'd miss that one on the next page.
No problem.
One more thing, Miles, I think I know the answer, but the budget for salaries and wages for police is, looks like approximately 10% increase, and I know we looked at about 3% increase. This includes new employees, how many? I'm guessing.
I think it's just unfreezing that position, I guess.
Unfreezing that position cleared up 150,000 or so, 140,000 or?
Well, yes, no. The, part of that was the unfreezing of the position this year, and so then that number carried forward into next year. There were also some new hires that came in with more experience, and so they received a bit more pay. I don't think, and Mike, I'll turn to you. I don't think this 1.549900 reflects unfreezing the last frozen position. But recall also that we've had several vacancies, and so that makes the 2017 year-end projection look lower than what it would normally be.
If you would, later on, email that to us, clarification on what you just said, whether there's inclusions or...
Well, there is not the...
You're certain?
I am. The frozen position remains frozen through 2018. Recall, we had two, and you allowed us to unfreeze one several months ago, and that person has stayed on and is in the 2018 budget.
So if council, in their wisdom, decided to unfreeze that, it would be a delta and it's...
It would increase that.
That would increase.
Yep.
Val, we've got two or three more pages of general fund. You want to continue?
I, I...
Thanks.
Thank you. I just wanted to, back on page 19, there's a part-time salary and special projects that's currently, well, is it vacant or not? Is that, that's not Carol who quit. That's, okay, that's all I need to know. That's good.
Anybody else through the general fund?
What's with the visitor center contract? I don't understand that. Paige?
It's on the same page, page 19, and it's item 100-1213961. What part do you not understand, sir?
It doesn't make money. We support it, 428. Where does that 428, what does it do?
Understand. The city has a contract for services with the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce to run our visitor center. So rather than have city employees, we contract with them to do that work.
Okay.
That's in addition to the gratis rent at the cultural center?
That's correct.
Okay.
And at the November 2nd meeting, the president of the chamber will be making her annual report to the council to show how these monies are used and return on investment and the like.
Page 22, I had a question, which is actually answered via email today. I think it might be useful. David actually partially answered this already. If our new public works director would like to answer, oh, I'm sorry.
What's the question?
Contract services. Yeah, just answer any question if you're, contract services, if you would. My specific question was what the on-call engineer, David already kind of answered that. I just want to hear you speak, please. Thank you.
The on-call engineer is basically somebody we, the city, turn to in the event, as David had mentioned, like, my expertise don't go that far. If we have a specific traffic study that necessitates a certain specialty in that area, then we would hire them, contract with them to provide those services. So an on-call engineer is really the one we choose, when we work with, is who has a lot of different expertise in different fields that maybe I don't have those strengths in.
Another good example that Ben's not aware of, that happened a couple of years ago, when we had a significant hailstorm that clogged up the front drains of City Hall and then caused flooding in City Hall, was to find an emergency solution to that drainage issue. Rather than bid out that work because it was something that we needed to do very quickly, we reached into our on-call engineer's bag of expertise, said, we need this help, we need it now. They gave us a bid for that work, and we would then, we're already under contract for them. So it was a time and materials design that we were able to then execute the construction of that and solve the problem, probably in just about a month's time.
Is there, how did you come up with that number? Just approximately, I'm sure it's approximation, but if you wouldn't mind, please?
Primarily just because of history, historical use, historical knowledge of the numbers of times we've had to reach out to them in the past.
Counsel, anything else through the general fund?
I have an answer to a question, but I'm not going to give it. Page 23, I request an answer on contract services, only $1,300, but it's an interesting situation that we've tried to solve. If somebody would like to talk about that solution and why we have $1,300 there. I have to know the answer, but...
Kip, would you like to answer that question? It's the 1,300 that is part of the fleet maintenance, it's the intrusion security? Yep.
So the cat intrusion security? That was for the intrusion system, and that's, that's the cost for the remainder, that's going to be the recurring cost, excuse me, for the monitoring and maintenance of that intrusion system.
And where's that located?
That's at the fleet maintenance building, and then we also have one in the public works facility and the wood shop.
So council will recall that we had a series of break-ins out at the public works facility, and so through cost sharing with the general fund, through public works, and then water and wastewater, we now have a system in place that provides us that better security.
Which I applaud. It's excellent to have that now.
Thank you, Ken.
I'm going to talk about an issue here, which is something I've been involved with for several months here. Jane Mannan and David and I have talked about this. We have a 72, on page 24, we have street lighting. There's been talk in the industry about broadband and smart streets and smart cities. I'm assuming since the budget numbers are still similar to what they have been historically, that we haven't really addressed it, certainly not in that light. Is there anybody, what do you think? Is, is there anybody, what do you think? Are we thinking of doing any of that this year? Broadband, smart cities?
Yes, sir, understand the question. The, the short answer is no, we've not. It is something that we could prepare to spend money on, I just don't think we're at that point yet. I, I'm not, I would have to spend quite a bit of time getting up to speed on what the technology is, what the capabilities, what, what it really entails, but we have not included that in, in the budget this year.
Down the line sometime, I would, I also have more curiosity about North Teller Build a Generation, doesn't have to be soon, you know, next year when we have a lull. I would appreciate maybe a presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
She's come to council a few times to give updates, it's been a while.
Yeah, I think that's expensive, council, if you remember, she wrote the, wrote the advisory, last time she presented.
Yeah, I'd like, that was great, and I appreciate that, but maybe a more in-depth detail about where it's going and what we can do to help.
And would council like that as a presentation to council, or would you just rather have Karen get with Val?
Maybe, Paul, who's not quite as aware.
I understand now by the explanation, I just didn't know what they did.
Okay.
Once we do it, Val, and then if we need to go forward with the whole council, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
General fund questions?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Paul.
I'm sorry. Do we have any idea on sign-ups for the pool, by any chance? I know it's been a short period of time.
We knew you were going to ask that question.
The interest in the pool?
Cindy is prepared for that.
Thank you.
Big smile on her face.
Well, it is exciting times, that's why I have a smile on my face. As of today, we have sold a total of 17 passes of some sort, one of them being a 10 punch, punch card, two of them being a 20 punch, punch card, and the remaining of them are annual passes. The majority of those annual passes are our senior annual passes. We do have one family pass of six, of a family of six, one family pass of five, and the other remaining are with four.
How much does that total?
Want to know a dollar amount too, Carol?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure. Right now, we're at $6,915.
Okay.
What do we do with a family that's, do they, can, do they all have to come in at once? Is there, how do we handle a family that comes in one at a time or something?
Yeah, we have a point-of-sale system, and so when, we actually get that operational in the aquatic center, we'll be taking a photo, so everyone will have their photo pass. And when they come in, that will scan, it will pull up their family on the screen, and we'll say, "You're good to go, and come on in and enjoy the facility."
Thank you, Cindy.
Anything else? Thanks, Cindy. Well, just for a little change, we will move on to audience participation relative to general fund. If you have a question or a concern, this would be a good time to go to the podium, and if not, we'll move forward. Remember, we have time for these things, but we'd like to get things behind us if we could, that's part of the reason we're starting this process a little bit early. But if you have nothing, we will move forward. Ken, do you think we need about a five-minute break? It's up to you, I'm fine. You good? All right. And we'll move on to, move on to the grants fund and questions relative to grants fund. After that, I've got DDA. Tanner, would you like to come and make a, say a few words about DDA budget, or do you want to just take questions? What would you like to do? Anything on grant fund? Counsel, I'm sorry, come on up, Tanner, my back. Come on up. All right.
So on page 33. Actually, the 32, 32 is the annual budget. Go ahead, Jim.
Short and sweet. DDA's never been in as good a shape as it is now. Any questions?
I reckon you'll meet your pavement to the city.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any problems, anything we can help you with?
Oh, challenges, certainly, but nothing we haven't been able to handle so far, and nothing that I anticipate in the way of unexpected issues. I think the budget is sound, you know, thanks a lot to Mike and city finance for being so great to work with and helping keep the number solid.
On page 32, which you don't have in front of you, but we have non-spendable land held for resale, $1 million and change. Has that been appraised, or is that just a number we're using from historical purposes? Is there any thought to getting a real appraisal?
Yeah, Mike, and correct me if I'm wrong, the auditors have requested an annual update to this figure in the way of what's referred to as a BPO, a broker's price opinion. Doesn't come with the cost of a full-blown appraisal, but it is from a real estate broker, and their professional opinion with supporting information as to the value of the property. And this year, I think that number came in slightly higher than what is recorded here, is that right?
I believe, under accounting standards, when, when you get an appraisal, you always go with the, gosh, drawing a blank. It either came in higher or lower, but I think if it's lower, you can't lower it, you always would increase it. But I might be, it might be reversed from that. So, anyway, we did have the appraisal done, or the BPO, and it stayed, I can't remember what it was, but where it's at now is where the audit said it needed to be.
So this basically is CMA and real estate agent terms, comparative market analysis kind of thing?
Yeah, something similar. There was an appraisal done by CBRE, I believe in 2015, 14 or 15, and so it's not really that old, and can certainly share that with you if you'd like. And back to that BPO, my recollection is that it came in slightly higher, and the correct thing to do is carry the lower value of the asset over.
Anything else from Tanner? Will you be applying for any grants or anything?
Nothing specific in the plan at the moment.
Will the property in downtown be used for any events or anything of that nature?
Boy, that is the hope. Currently, there's a Liz Pendants filed on Lot 2, it is subject to litigation, so we are, the board has decided for the time being not to invest more public funds into the property so long as it is subject to litigation.
Thank you.
Tanner, do you employ more than one attorney?
The DDA's general counsel has been and still is Paul Benedetti. Mr. Benedetti recommended Kendall Kramer-Rupp Dean Neville, David Neville, as a, someone in closer proximity to Woodland Park who could help with more immediate issues if needed, and with the lawsuit, so that Mr. Benedetti is freed up for other roles in that, should he be needed.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on to culture and recreation, page 35. Val, if you want to lead us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, I'm thrilled to have this breakout. I think the public will be interested in this also. It, it puts a certain visibility to an investment, which is, is part of the mission statement, I believe, or at least that's the way I read it. But I think it's useful, it was, is useful for me, in accounting standpoint, to take a look at the numbers, the plot, the in and out, the net negatives, net positives, whatever. So I, I kind of went through each category, we have parks and rec as a category, we have the cultural center as a category, we have the aquatic center as a category. Aquatic center is going to be, we're going to learn with aquatic center, we, we're doing our best guesses and our best opinions and a lot of good expertise, but we don't really know what's going to happen. We've got $6,000, we know that. But best estimates are on various things. So I went through, and, and some of this isn't really a question, but just, I, I wanted to note, note this, because the public has made an investment in parks and recs and culture, and I think it's useful for them to be aware. For instance, if you just isolate parks and recs with, with basic revenues versus expenditures, it's about a $213,000 deficit. The cultural center operates at about $100,000 deficit, and the aquatic center, who knows? Right now, we've got an estimate of $139,000 deficit. These are, we talk about these things every year when they come in, part of the mission. So this is a cost center that really isn't expected to go positive, I think, right?
Correct.
I mean, it would be nice, but $75 for one Tai Chi lesson probably is not going to work.
Correct.
For instance. I have one question about the aquatic centers, I don't know what those net numbers add up to, 360 negative or whatever, it's, it's something. Okay. But I wanted to know about the, what I call FTEs in the, in the aquatic center. We have certain part-time and full-time, and there's shifts, and there's lots seven days a week and things like that. Have you folks, yes, please explain, thanks.
Cindy, if you'll just go over the number of FTEs, and then the full-time equivalents for the part-time staff, that?
Certainly, I might need your help with the equivalent.
Okay.
For the full-time staff, we have three full-time staff members. We have an aquatics manager, we have assistance aqua, manager, and a head guard. The remaining employees are estimated in the budget for 29 part-time employees. Those are lifeguards, front desk, and maintenance.
And each of those is half-time, so it's 14 and a half full-time equivalents?
Right.
And so the total aquatic center staff is 17 and a half full-time equivalents?
Boy, I wouldn't want to be that half-person.
I know, it'd be tough.
I'm sorry, I missed the lifeguards and?
Lifeguards, front desk, and maintenance.
How, how did you come up with, I sort of get the three apart, that's a tough one. 29, how did you come up with the 29 calculation?
Yes, we're operational 90 and a half hours a week, and so we have different shifts that we're needing to cover. We figure we need to have five people at the front desk, and we need, if we're at full capacity, 12 lifeguards, and then we were looking at three to four maintenance people within those hours.
When you say five at the front desk?
Not all at the same time within shifts.
Right, so that's, that's a key point.
Right.
If they rotate through, so 90 and a half hours of operation actually equates to needing staffing 97 and a half hours, because people get there 30 minutes before it opens and stay 30 minutes after. So to make sure that there were sufficient people on all shifts, that's how the numbers came up today.
And let's remember what Val said, and everybody knows, relative to the pool, we don't know. And that's one reason why we're breaking this out, we take a look at it every month, and we can make the right decision. In the meantime, a lot of the questions are, it's, it's a big guess, right? We'd like to know more, but we will as we operate, and so, thanks for breaking this down the way you did, because it'll make it easy, a lot easier for you all, and then when you, when you come to us, it'll, it'll really show exactly what we need to do, and what we're doing great, so, love the process there, it really makes it easy.
Thank you. As you know, I went horrible time trying to take notes, could you, once again, how many lifeguards, there was five at the front desk, I got that.
Five at the front desk, 12 lifeguards at maximum capacity, three to four maintenance people, and then I did neglect to say two child watch employees as well. And those will be just on certain hours when child watch is available, typically when programming is taking place.
Towel.
Child watch.
Child, although we will rent towel, so it could be towel watch as well.
That won't be an expense of, of your revenue.
Thought it was a purchase bar or something.
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, anything else for the culture and recreation fund?
Well, how, how is that going to work in terms of ordinance, or why is ordinance required to establish another fund?
That's required in the city charter. To, to, council is the approval authority for creating funds.
Okay.
And as we've, as Erin has counseled us, by adopting this budget, some might consider that to be sufficient, but we, we probably want to, to work with her to see if we actually need that ordinance, we just want to make sure that it's, it's, it's done in a correct fashion.
That was my interpretation, but let's do it right.
Correct. And if I, if I could, very quickly, on the culture and recreation programs, the, the subsidy has, has been consistent for a lot of years. We do have a recovery goal for many of our activities, the Tai Chi that you mentioned, or whatever it's called, that we recover 120% of the costs. Sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't. But park and rec programs, the cultural center, those have been subsidized for a lot of years, as is common in many, many different communities. This isn't unusual, the number seems large, but it's what we've been doing for a whole lot of years, and the general fund supports it very effectively.
Thank you. I have one additional question for, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Page 38, there's the part-time cultural center, 1,200 is the ending four digits. I have been renting at various times, or my group's been renting that facility, we always pay for the bartender. I think this is the bartender here, what, why, is there an expenditure-revenue balance on this, or is this just an expenditure?
If I can help you with this. The part-time position is actually a maintenance person that works 20 hours a week, comes in during events, sometimes off-hours of events, but when you have an event there and you're paying for that bartender, that's part of your event fee.
So this, this has nothing to do with the bartender?
That's, well, he bartends, but he's also the maintenance person there, so it kind of has dual roles.
But, but his salary is different from the bartending fees?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
Okay, we're going to move on to the street capital improvement fund. This is a short one.
Mayor, did you, with the general fund, you, you queried the citizens to see if they had any comments on the general fund. Did you want to do that for grants and the culture and recreation as well?
I do, and what I'll do is if, if anyone has impish, since we haven't had a lot yet, just raise your hand, and we'll, we'll get you up here, you know that, don't let me go too far. So if anyone has something, let me know, but I guess I should stop after every one and, and ask, and I will do that, starting now. So, we'll go to the streets capital improvement fund, and the thing that stands out for me, obviously, is the expenditures.
obviously, is the expenditures, and we're going to spend a little more than a million six in street paving improvements, the four times that we spent last year. Can you, I know that's chip sealed, can you help us understand that a little bit? Ben, sorry.
Ben's going to work hard to answer all your questions. Some of these things have been in the works for several years, and so I may jump in to give him a hand.
That 1.6 million is a combination of several things. Park, street, construction project, we already have designed, dual road design, David, spending for, and the dual construction.
Yeah, Ben, you're going to have to tell really close to your lips.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
The park, street construction, dual, street construction, and the design for that. That's approximately 900,000. You also had mentioned our yearly $400,000 chip seal budget. Our pavement management study, which we have not done in about five years, we need to get that updated, and we have an estimate for that. Also, we plan on doing some drainage improvements per our stormwater master plan, that eleven-by-seventeen one-inch document over there, which gives us guidance for drainage projects that have been identified that we need to do high, medium, and low priority. Also, we have in that possibly South Baldwin Street at Highway 24, potentially South Avenue Laurel Two Baldwin Street improvements. And also, we're looking at Bergstrom Alley, designing construction for some additional parking and roadway wide.
Counsel may recall, two years ago, I believe you allocated the funding to do the park-street design. Recall that it's adjacent to the How-To Store on the east side. Recall that on the east side of that street are the concrete-lined ditches that many have described as car catchers, car killers. We originally planned to do the park-street work, excuse me, in 2017. We needed to delay that, so 2018 is actually a catch-up year for us on that particular project, but we're still going to be able to execute the standard amount that we do each year to fulfill the requirements of the pavement management plan, as well as to do the update of the pavement management plan itself. We need to do that about every five years. We've made great progress with the pavement management plan execution over the last ten years. We want to keep that process going. So yes, there's absolutely more money being spent this year than in the past, but most of it has to do with the project that is Park Street and Dual Avenue.
That'll be a nice improvement for it.
It will. It'll also include some parking on the east side as well. Right now, if you try to park on that, you run the risk of your wheels falling off into the ditch. So that will be, it'll be very nice, and it'll put that drainage underground, so aesthetically and hydraulically, it will work much nicer.
Outside of the two obvious locations, are there any plans for full-depth paving? I know the dual and park are full...
We haven't identified exactly where those are at yet. Our goal is to update that study, that analysis, that first thing, beginning of the year, and get some of those identified. We do have, I have a map that shows what we've done in the past. There's a few areas that we know that we need to do some full-depth replacement, but we haven't tied those down exactly.
Counsel will recall that in the pavement management plan, they typically offer three or four techniques to do things with the roads. Chip seal being the least expensive, and therefore the technique that we can use throughout most of the town. Chip seal in some applications just doesn't work, so we need to either do a full-depth reclamation or a complete rebuild. The full-depth reclamation isn't as expensive, but it gives us a great product that's almost as good as and has the life expectancy similar to a full rebuild. So we, the analysis that we do every five years is extremely in-depth. There's radar machines and sonar machines that drive the roads to check, to see what kind of things are happening subsurface, and it allows us to make a scientific approach to the execution of the plan.
And I hear you already have a quote for that, or three bids or something.
Yes, we do. We have, we've historically used Stand Tech. We've also, I've also been in contact with SEH and another firm. The range is approximately 53,000 to 85,000. Yes, sir.
On the street restriping, we will be, does this include crosswalks parallel to 24?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
That's the difference. That's why we did that. We know Main Street looked at that, and there were suggestions made to improve the safety of movement along there, so we bumped that up to incorporate that.
We have a slight increase in sidewalk improvements. Where are those located? I don't know.
This year, we had a list of areas we identified as needing some real fixing. We had that list, and when we got bids for those, we found out that it was twice our amount that we had budgeted for. So we felt that doubling that would give us that much more ability to fix some of those needed repair areas.
We've also looked at the master plan that's in existence, and we hope to, with that money, do some, one 300-foot block. That's what we've been doing over the last several years, is try to make some connections within the sidewalk system. So that would be a goal of ours, to not only do the repairs, but to also add a new section. If we can add new sections piecemeal, sooner or later, we'll have a complete sidewalk network. And again, that was a Main Street initiative that they asked us to look at, and we think we can fund that adequately.
Yeah, we've discussed that, Parks and Rec.
And you've added input into that, Sally, based on the walk survey that we did?
Yeah.
Good. Did you, on that one section by the, and I, it's off the cuff, but on that one section across the street, by the post office, that is so steep, with no handicap ramp, and the railing, is that a suggestion that you made for a repair?
Sally, we're going to have to ask you to come forward. Or Ben can answer.
Ben?
Is that a, is, it's not on the list. Pretty bad area.
Thank you.
This is, I'm not sure if this is a Mike question or a Ben question. I just, we've got transfers out. If you could whip through those real quick, I'd appreciate it. I know they're located in various places. If you wouldn't mind explaining the counting there.
There are transfers out. The first one, 150,000 is to Stormwater Management Fund because in the past, the drainage improvements have been in this fund, the 410 Fund, but now that we have a new Stormwater Management Fund, some of the streets, the revenues that flow into the street improvements can be used for drainage. So in this case, they are being transferred out of the 410 Fund, Streets Fund, into the new Stormwater Management Fund. The other amount, the Streets Personnel, that is an amount that is related to salaries that are in the General Fund, that with an estimate or a calculation of the amount of time that Public Works Director, the Construction Inspector, the Admin Assistant, and also Streets Crew work related to the capital improvements, projects in the capital improvements. So it's an estimated percentage.
Anything else for Ben? Before we move on to water? Ben, thanks very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Carlson? Mr. Carlson?
Yeah.
If you'd like to speak, you know the protocol.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, I have about a 10-minute statement I wanted to make, and considering the hour...
Can you make it five?
No, I can't make it five. So I was proposing that I could make that statement at a workshop next week, something like that.
You can.
Okay?
Consider it.
Consideration. Thank you.
Darwin Nakarado, 410 Craig Court, here in Woodland Park. I think this question's been asked and answered many times, but just to clarify, the transfer out for the Aquatic Center out of the 410 Fund in prior years, I assume that's for streets and infrastructure around the Aquatic Center itself?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick question about that. Are we done with all the links and things we're doing on Baldwin for the Aquatic Center?
Yes. I know that there was one additional bit of striping that they needed to do, and I think it's been completed, but other than that, now we're in the inspection process. Our Construction Inspector spent time on the ground yesterday and today. I don't know where we are in the acceptance process. We'll accept the entire project, but as far as I know, all of the road, curb gutter, sidewalk, drainage, everything associated with the Aquatic Center infrastructure from that perspective has been completed. Cindy, Ben, am I mistaken? Okay.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward?
Come on, Pat. Gay O'Garrick, 1180 Pine Ridge Road. I didn't know where this item was in the budget before, and I just noticed it now under the General Fund, page 10, and that is community investment. And I was at the Budget Workshop last year when it was noted that this sum was decreased. I knew at that time at least $5,000. And being a supporter of the nonprofits of the city of Woodland Park, I would strongly encourage the Council and everyone to look to upgrade this sum in 2016. It was 27,000 plus, and it was decreased because of expenses, I believe, for the park and the pool, and all of the nonprofits, and our big aging population. Sure looks to the city for support next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so you know, our, kind of our community investment advocate is John Chaffey, and he's not here today. I'm sure we'll be discussing that.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Why did you look at me when you were talking about Woodland Park?
Our hair matches.
Just checking, I was to office. Okay, Kip, you want to come up? We've got your three funds, and start with Counsel, and questions, we'll probably start with Stormwater.
And actually, that's going to be Ben. Ben's our Stormwater guy. Kip does the clean water and the really dirty water. Yeah. Ben handles that, that's kind of in between.
Stormwater is not clean or dirty?
That's right.
If we have questions, we'll see, Ben, if we have questions for you on Stormwater. Counsel? There may have been a method to my madness, who knows?
Okay.
Okay, so we have nothing for Ben. Thanks, Kip. Water utility, hopefully that's clean water.
Yes, it is.
Give everyone a quick update. Well, never mind, we'll wait on that. We all wish you, we had your money. I guess, we kind of all know a bunch of this stuff, but talk about your reservoir plans and things like that, how the, I guess that's the water fund, we'll go into the wastewater when you get there, I guess.
Okay, the reservoir, currently, we're in discussions with the Boy Scouts of America for land negotiations. We will bring to Counsel for their consideration and decision on what that agreement may look like on that construction of the reservoir on that property. I'm hopeful that we'll get to that decision this year, and I have a small amount budgeted for design this year. If not, I still have a large percentage of that design budgeted for next year.
And that project is approximately, around eight and a half, nine million dollars.
And that basically secures our augmentation water. Currently, we have a 55-acre foot reservoir that we will deplete in one whole month, and the new proposed reservoir will be 350 acre-feet, approximately one year of augmentation water in storage windfall locally here.
Because there's a lot of folks in the audience who may not understand augmentation water versus usable water, I understand that if, when he says deplete the augmentation water in a month, that doesn't mean he's, we're depleting our water supply. It's how we put water back into the system that we've effectively borrowed to augment our other water sources. So please don't be alarmed that we have just that one month of water supply, but Counsel will recall that this augmentation reservoir has been a goal for a long, long time. I can remember former Councilman Smith really pushing that. Kip has done yeoman's work, working with the Scouts. I think we're almost there. The mayor and I have met with their executive director along with Kip. We think we're in really a good place with them. The devil will be in the details.
Anything else for Kip? I assume when you get to that point, when you present to Counsel, you will have funding sources and things like that, or...
I have discussions with where we get the funds for projects like this. The negotiations for Counsel will be strictly for the land, and we will pursue at that point because we'll have more information in the funding stream.
And could you just briefly touch on the construction ongoing on the wastewater treatment plant?
Absolutely. Started construction the end of February for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. That's an $8.3 million project that expands the treatment capacity of the plant to a population of 14,100. We touched on every aspect of the existing plant. We added new inflight line, additional biological removal, additional clarification, changed our disinfection from chlorine gas and sulfur gas to UV, and did not touch the composting aspect. However, we did install, we are installing a new screw press due to de-watering, which helps with the compost process. When you de-water sludge, the drier you make it, the faster you can compost it.
And the project is moving along very well. The quality of the work is extremely good, and without putting anybody on the spot, I believe it will be finished ahead of schedule. And it'll be a great addition to the community. That's my own personal opinion. I sit on the board, it's Counsel. That's why I'm sitting here.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. The numbers are good, and I wish you success with the reserve water. That would be a big plus for the community.
We've been very fortunate over the years. We've paid off debt and been able to position ourselves for these projects.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Anything else on water, wastewater, stormwater?
Mayor, Counsel, I'd like to...
Mayor, council, I'd like to point out a question that came up in the general fund regarding insurance and the decrease. If you look at page 52, up in salary and benefits, you can see that new line called workers' comp for 7,900. And then also, if you go down towards the bottom, under operating expenses, the second to last item, property and casualty insurance, you see an amount of 23,800. So that's just to circle that loop, what, with what the, how the insurance was, is now directly reported in these funds as opposed through, as opposed through a transfer.
It's good to know. Thank you. Anyone in the audience relative to water, wastewater, Stormwater? Who would like to talk about the proposed plan? Page 66.
Do you have questions, or do you?
Let's, yeah, let's start with that. Questions on page 66?
The only question I had is, is really to let us know, when was that survey done?
This one wasn't the, it says per market survey. Council will recall that every three years, we do a very formal and in-depth survey. This one, this is in one of the interim years. We still call it a survey. It was a matter of a half a day's work of the consultant that's been working with us over the years. So she does a more, a quicker look at all the data to help bring us in line, so that in that third year, we don't have huge recovery.
So the last one was done when?
The, we will have, actually, in 2018, we will do the full survey. The last one was done in 2015. And we, we may not use the same consultant. We now belong to Mountain State's Employment Council, and they offer a similar service. So we're, we're deciding which route we want to go.
Also, on, on this, some of the titles have been corrected or updated. For example, deputy police chief, there is no longer deputy police chief. It's now commander. So there's been several instances where we've actually updated to what it actually is now.
And we'll provide.
It will, it will be corrected in the future versions.
Counsel, what else? We should decide on a next work session for everyone's benefit. It says 16th or 17th, or possibly the 24th.
The 24th is already scheduled.
And the 16th or 17th is?
Is to add a third one if we want, so it would actually be a second one, and the 16th and 17th are Monday or a Tuesday.
I'm gonna recommend, and council, you tell me, since Councilman Shafer will, certainly won't be able to be here next week, the 17th or 16th, if it's okay with everybody, since we got through this the first time, can we have our next work session on the 24th? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Let me throw a wrench into that work, because Councilman Shafer had advised me when we came out of this, with this schedule, that he would not be available on the 24th. He has another commitment for another meeting.
Can we do a doodle and find another date similar?
I'm sure we can. We will cer- we, we, we did that with the 16th and the 17th. Yeah, the, there's, that is a busy week with things associated with the Aquatic Center. The, what I'm, before we set a date, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to understand is what else do we need to talk about? And I know we deferred vehicles, primarily because of the Vehicle Utilization Review Committee. I still have a budget proposal that includes vehicles, so we didn't talk about that tonight, but I certainly could in just a very few minutes. Mr. Carlson has said that he has a 10-minute presentation on the 410 Fund. Have no idea what that's going to do for the discussion. I would ask that if he could, to get that to us, so we can get it out to the council, so that you can decide if you want to meet to discuss that, or if he wants to present in a public session. I just want some help in deciding, where do you want us to go from here? What are your thoughts on what you heard tonight? Are there some adjustments you want us to make? The more you can help us now, the better prepared we'll be for whenever we have our second, third, or 16th work session.
My, my thought is that we're missing two council people, and so I want them to have adequate input, so we can ask them for that input, if they could possibly give it to you, and then take that and what we've talked about tonight, and try to work up the date. I know the 23rd, 25th, 27th are no good, and the 24th doesn't work for John. I don't know if the 26th does. But let's find, if possible, a time before that council meeting on the 2nd, where we can get that kind of input. Does that make sense? I don't know if we're gonna have a chance for that, but I know, I know if we contact Noel and, and John, when he's well, that they can submit questions and concerns to you, and maybe we can handle it that way. We still have that council meeting on, we don't need a work session necessarily for that. We can still talk about it, right?
Oh, absolutely. On November 2nd, we could, could wrap things up if, I mean, there was a reason October 26 wasn't suggested. I don't remember when I queried the council, their availability, but we'll check that. We'll send that out and see what we can do. Based on what I'm hearing from this discussion, we might be able to wrap things up via the second meeting, fourth meeting, and the fourth meeting, but the more you can give to us now, to help us be successful with that, we would be sure.
So council, do they have to be right now? Any concerns with staff? We just think that we're at, we know. Bob, can you get us a copy of your presentation? That'd be great. Make it all, make it easier for us. So we know we have Bob, we know we got Bert, and we know we need input from Noel and John, and I think we'll get those four pretty soon, we're gonna be close. Maybe we can get that hopefully before that 11, 2 meeting, and if we don't, we'll do it that way.
And, uh, shall I still check and see if October 26 is available?
I think so.
Okay.
Does that work for the rest of us?
Yeah.
We've gone through the dates. That's about the only one. If the 16th or 17th is too early for John, then I, I'd know what the rest of the days look like, based on council's input and staff's input.
Okay. That sounds good. Thanks to everybody that came today, and we'll keep you abreast of our next move. Staff, great job. Thank you. Okay, we'll be on the 26th. But you've got some info already, so we might be able to do it without. Oh, everybody, I'm sorry.
No, 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 not on the schedule, but...